Morning. It's eight thirty. We'll call the meeting in order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the light of the United States of America, and to the rule of which stands one nation, one God, and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there any? Hearing none. Approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or corrections? Approved is read. Consent agenda items: approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personal action notices, approval of the human services report. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second. I get a motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Routine business: approval of claims.
Second.
Got a motion second. No discussion. Will you call a roll, please?
Miller, Krokman, Bartley, Pierce, Johnson, motion carries.
Item B, department head reports. Bob, would you like to start?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Morning.
Our August twenty-six exercise in Huron went well. It was a skill exercise and they put a car in the water and we got the car out of the water and they had a couple of dummies in there and they sent divers in after them. And it was a good exercise. Richard was in the emergency operations center. Most of the time I was out there setting up the emergency operations center and then I departed and coming back to Brookings. Richard did an excellent job while I was gone. And I think he learned a lot from working in EOC and he probably learned a lot more since I wasn't there and hovering over them and bugging the crap out of them. You may not put that in the minute. Okay. Today, we have, or tonight, eight PM, we have, it will be the place to be in Brookings County. We have got a zoning meeting. Could last a long time. I need to request from the board, what time would you like me to designate a hard stop? And a hard stop obviously means...
I think the best way to proceed, we start at eight because, and we're that late just for listening public so that our members of the planning and zoning board who are harvesting or working in the fields right now can make it to the meeting and that's why we start at eight o'clock during those hours that farming's active. But I think we should announce at the beginning of the meeting that we will be ending the meeting at ten thirty and that if we haven't gotten through all the testimony, it'll be continued until our next planning and zoning meeting. I know that there have been times when we have gone until one or two o'clock in the morning and I think it's very difficult to do due process at one o'clock in the morning. So, ten thirty, eleven if people think we should go that late, but I think for some people, that's even pretty late, so.
Thank you very much.
How many items on your agenda tonight?
One big one.
Just the one?
And then a couple of minor ones. We've got a plat that we're gonna, I'm gonna make the request to the chairman that we take the plat from the bottom and move it up.
That was real wise. Okay.
Stay there the whole time.
Do these two ones and then I think you're okay with ten thirty and if the group wants more time, I think eleven should be an absolute cutoff. That's, depends where you're at in the question and answers.
Obviously, we don't wanna, we don't wanna stop in the middle of someone speaking. We understand that part, but we also, I mean, I've been there past two AM in the morning and it's not fun.
Bob, how do you handle that when you have multiple? Say you have fifty people that wanna say similar or the same type. Do you give a certain amount of time for each person? That says you have five minutes and they can take as many people as they want? Or do you say there's a spokesperson and then anybody else that wants to stand up and say they are for or against? How do you handle that?
Typically, it's the chairman that runs the meeting and he sets out the time limit. And the time limit has been five minutes in the past.
Okay.
And we do offer the chance, if they wanna get together in a little group and like three people wanna say the exact same thing, then they can join together and one person can talk for fifteen minutes. Otherwise, you start talking, you cut them off at five, then they lose their train of thought, you know. But we allow everyone to speak and if they wanna speak twice, they just get put back in the cycle and put on them, you know, into the line and they can keep coming back up. But once it starts to get repetitious, then the chairman starts to, then he does his chairmanship stuff and say, well, we have already heard that. Do you have anything new to add to the, you know? It's a very, Jeff Robbins is our chairperson and he's very professional and been doing it for a while.
Would you have a special meeting or this would go to your next scheduled meeting? On what date?
That's what I'm requesting from the board. I mean, my next meeting's gonna be October third. We do have a special meeting scheduled for September twenty-first on ordinance hearings. Typically, we don't wanna totally confuse the two things. We've gotta get moving on that ordinance. The only way to get moving on that ordinance is September twenty-first, start getting stuff passed. Technically, by Robert's rules of order, it's your next scheduled meeting if you, if you lay on the table to the next meeting, your, our next scheduled meeting's gonna be September twenty-first at seven PM.
That's, I mean, importance of this meeting, I don't know what...
I mean, my concern is I can see continued on and then it hits your timeline and then you're basically starting over the next meeting again, that people will get in line to say the same stuff they said the meeting before. You know?
I know that it's always an issue, because it's your budget, of adding another meeting and it's always a time issue with the planning and zoning board. But I wonder, when we know we're going to have the numbers of people that are going to wanna participate in the hearing, if it might not be appropriate to ask the board if we can't, and do this at the beginning so everybody knows what we're talking about, that if we can't get all the testimony in, and we could get the testimony in and then do our part at our next meeting too. But maybe, maybe we could have another meeting sooner rather than later, depending on the planning commission's schedule. Everybody's individual schedules, if they could be there. It would be, this is an important enough issue that I myself wouldn't have any hesitation having a second special meeting just to finish dealing with this issue. But that, that would just be a thought and maybe sooner rather than later, so as Commissioner Krokman says, everybody doesn't feel they have to say everything they already said again.
I guess I can, I tend to agree.
I've got no issue one way or the other. It's just we would have to address that to the planning board to see if, it is starting to get to be, the cold in the air is starting to come in, which tells me that the farmers are gonna start getting out in the field more and they do not come in at eight o'clock when, once they start to get out in the field.
Right.
Even, even then.
And, and maybe we would ask that question before we start taking testimony so that we could tell the audience, if you don't get to talk tonight, this is when we're going to continue it to and if you can't be there that night, maybe you wanna come up sooner rather than later so that you get your opportunity to speak.
I will have to check on, because we have to notice the meeting properly in the paper and all that. So I'll, I'll see if we can schedule another meeting besides the September twenty-first meeting. Soon as I get down. Very good. That's, we'll go with that and we'll let the board, board know. Okay. We had a safety committee meeting. Everyone went well. They, they commended everyone for the tornado, wasn't a drill, for the tornado event that everyone went downstairs in the basement for. Everyone did a good job. And August twenty-fourth, I went out to Metro for that OEM meeting. Richard went up on August thirty up to the Capex twenty-twenty dedication near White. Hurricane Harvey, I presume everyone's heard of that, raising havoc down in, down in Texas. And now we got another one coming in probably on the east coast. But they did cancel my pipeline meetings in Washington because most of the DOT people that would be coming to that meeting, their headquarters is in Houston, so. And I've got no issue with that. That was, that was a good call. Our emergency management conference is next week in Deadwood. I get back on Thursday. Friday, we got a National Preparedness Day event in this building down on the first floor. We got a couple of weather radios for door prizes. We'll have juice and cookies and it'll be an afternoon type event, one to five. September seventeen to twenty, we got the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. We're still working on how I'm getting out there. I may write of Mr. Burke and Commissioner Jensen or I may just drive back out. Well, that one's still up in, up in the air. I did submit my grant, or our grant, not my grant, our grant to the Department of Transportation. I haven't heard back yet. We will hear on that grant by the end of this month, because they've got a fast turnaround on that. I've got no new information on carbon dioxide near Aurora. I will be working on the Madera Township drainage issue where they came in a couple of weeks ago and discussed the Corps of Engineers. I've got the township's paperwork. I'm looking for our paperwork now. I've been in contact with the Corps of Engineers. They're willing to come out and talk to us. I did get that phone. So it's now, but they do want some paperwork sent to them first to see what, what they came out last time for. Because they really don't wanna duplicate what they've been doing in the past. And then I did want the commission to know I may be out of the country for October twenty-first to twenty-seventh. That's, that's before our big snow season and, and after the tornado season. But I may, may be taking a trip out of the country, October twenty-first to twenty-seventh, using annual vacation. Any questions?
I did have a call from a dairy township about the upcoming meeting, when it might be, so. If you were looking for information, you know, Londa had a lot of the, you know, information too, so.
Yeah, we have, but, but before we can set meetings, the Corps respectfully wants to know what's going on.
Okay.
What they did, they had a big changeover in people, just like everyone else.
Okay.
The Corps deal is almost like the military where you're only there for so many years and then you move on. You either move on or you move out, type scenario, so. As soon as I can, I'll get the information to the township and to the Drainage Board, which is the county commissioner.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank Bob. Vicki.
Morning.
Morning.
Just letting you know that the kiosk that was in Hy-Vee, that you could go out and buy your tags for motor vehicle, Hy-Vee was short of rooms, so they wanted it moved, so they moved it out of there last week. And I've been in contact with the state and they're looking for a new location to move it to and do not have one yet, so I'll keep you updated on that because I do think it gets used a lot. So, we want to find another place to put it, but the state has to approve it and they're still in the process of looking at different options, so just to give you an update on that. And we received the centrally assessed utilities from the state and so now we will work those into the budget. There isn't going to be a lot of change. The valuation went up with the utilities, a small amount, but then with the OHE change and everything, it isn't going to make much of a difference on the tax dollars. The levy may go down a little bit, but we'll be working together with Stacy when we, so we can have the changes to you for the adopted budget. And our surplus sale is over and I'm gonna have Jenna kinda go over that with you. She's got all the figures and everything on that.
Yes. So, the online surplus sale went for ten days. Started August fourteenth, ended the twenty-fourth. We did sell most of the items. The sale brought in eleven thousand four hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty cents. So, should receive that in like six weeks or so, but wondering what we'd like to do with the remaining items. I kinda talked to Dick about some of the highway items and he kind of agreed too that most of them, it's mostly junk. So, I don't know if it's worth relisting. I mean, some of these, I put the bid out, starting at like ten dollars and they didn't sell, so to have to go through a relisting, I, I don't know. But yeah.
Can you tell us what the items are?
Yep. There's two six-foot Delta front box toolboxes. Listed those for ten dollars each. They didn't, they didn't go. There's a fax machine from the community health. It's in working condition, but it's pretty outdated. There's nine deep steel shelving units. There's fourteen steel wafer broom cores. A gas dispenser, a couple of chemical cones from the weed department. There's a seventy-inch TV. It turns on, but it's, it's black. I mean, there's, I don't, Sean doesn't know what's wrong with it. And then there's a, just a high-back rolling chair from the finance office that's pretty worn. And then just a couple things from the IT department that don't work, so. And that's it.
I think winter's coming on. I think it would be Hovas to take them to the landfill.
Do we have the option of donating, like to restore or anything like that?
I suppose, but why would they want junk?
Well, like the shelving units and things, but what they will do is they'll come and look. And I think maybe we should ask them to come look. If there's anything they want, they can take them. The fax machine, they might take. And the shelving units, they might take. And maybe the chair sometimes. And then send the rest to the landfill, but, but maybe we should offer them the opportunity first because they'll move it, whatever we've got.
And we've done that in the past and they've came and got some things, so we can sure do that. Have them look and then just haul the rest to the landfill, if that...
Well, we can, the metal stuff, we'll just throw in our scrap trailer and haul it over with scrap. That's a little something we'll get for it. We won't pay to get rid of it.
Okay.
And then too, I just wanted to let the public also know that we, I did get that running list, Leanne, that you had asked last year for the sale to get a list of where all the items went and then who we sold them to. And that is in the finance office and anybody can look that up, so.
That's all we have. Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'll try to be brief this morning. Just, and I gave you papers on the jail and so forth that inmate population is down. We have thirty. I think out of the thirty, there's four that actually are on work release. So, everybody else is, needs to stay in there. It seems like our assaults are up. You know what? Our methamphetamine arrests are down and our aggravated assaults are, are up from domestic situations. Plus, the city police have had a couple of knifings in the, in the city and so forth, so our assaults are up, so. Our emergency committals, we've had eight in the last two weeks. One night, we had two at a time, or two. This weekend, I think they had, had two, so there's not, so far, we've been able to get them into beds, but there's not much room anymore. And so, it's not just Brookings County that's having issues with, I should say, emergency committals. It's kinda, it's, it's all over. And Sioux Falls Aveira's been taking some of these from Yankton and so forth. So, but beds, what I worry about is when we don't have a bed. I don't have room for, for an emergency committal in jail. I have no space to put this person, so I don't know what I'm gonna do if they, if the court orders me to hold them until a bed is available. I'm a little worried about that. My suggestion would be is that I'll try to keep them at the hospital and then I'll put a guard on them. But I just, I don't have space there for, until I get some safe rooms, I don't have space for, for something like that. So, so far, we've been able to get them in. Also, I'm just kinda holding out to see if our, well, I know our ordinance is final reading today and then I should order signs. And Commissioner Pierce, you talked about you wanted some type of signs for overflow?
I think that as we're moving forward with maybe the jail expansion or even if we don't expand on, on this location, we should have some signage that says that there's courthouse overflow parking and directing people to the Fifth Street Gym parking lot. I just don't think the general public is aware of the fact that when you're here on magistrate day on Monday and, and we don't have enough parking, that, that lot is available less than a half a block away.
So, I'll go ahead and order some signs. I need to order signs for forty-eight hour parking and then this parking lot's under video surveillance. We can put those all in the same, same areas. There's streetlights over there that are at each, kinda at each driveway, so I think we can just put them, put them right on those. Get permission from the city to do that.
And Marty, the second reading of that ordinance isn't until the end of this month.
Oh, I thought it was today.
No.
Well, I got time. I'm gonna have to rush. Okay.
Marty, on those signs, I guess I don't think I'd call it overflow parking. I'd just call it courthouse parking.
Yeah. Okay.
Exactly.
Also, tomorrow night, I'm gonna go to the council meeting in White. The, the auditors suggested that I renew my contracts with each community for, for contract law enforcement. My contract, the, the contract that we have with each community, and there's four of them, is that it's automatically renewed at the end of the year. And, and the only thing is that if I raise the contract price, I give that in writing. And I did raise two contracts this year, the City of Volga and the City of Elkton. I raised just to get even with White and Aurora. So, I'm gonna go and, and so I'll be presenting with you with some new contracts. It's the same contract. It's just, you know, each town has, has some different council members too and, and I can review that with each town too, of their responsibilities and my responsibilities, the contract law, so. So, I'll start doing that with the councils, starting tomorrow night. I guess White has their meeting tomorrow night. Otherwise, we're staying busy in, in the county also. We've had several accidents. You know, schools open, complaints of speeding, those type, those types of things, so we stay busy. Highway Patrol has got, most of their guys hired it now, so there are, I think they're at full strength in our district now. I think there's eight that covers four counties. So, they're still pretty slim, but I mean, it's, it's better than it was, I think it was five there for a while, so.
But that takes us off the interstate.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
We don't wanna be there.
We, I try to keep my guys off the interstate when it comes to that. We have a, just a little tidbit here. At mile marker one forty-one, the cows go under the interstate. Everybody that goes by there thinks a cow is out, you know, like every, it seems like every day someone calls. But you gotta send someone there because what if the cow is, something is out? You know, this morning, now we had the same thing and, and the trooper did go because my guy was, my deputy was going to an accident over by White and, and the trooper went and he probably knew it was gonna go under the, and he calls, he says, yeah, it's between the fences. But, you know, if you don't send someone and then it has to be, and then it's out and then somebody hits something, we, so we still have to go, but that place, I wish, I wish it was never there, but the farmer likes it. Gets to his pasture, so.
I hate to go to another sign, but maybe cattle crossing under interstate sign might be appropriate.
You know, that's something, maybe I guys should talk to the state, see if they could put cattle crossing underneath bridge or something, so anyway. Thank you.
Well, we have the bridge north of Bruce open. It's not completely done. They got some dirt, then rock to pick up and seeding, but at least it's open to traffic. Last Friday, we had a situation that, that could've went south in a hurry and luckily, the people that were working there got them turned around. But we've got people that are driving around our barricades and also a semi that moved them out of the way and was gonna cross the bridge southwest of Bruce. Well, currently, that, that bridge is sitting on four bottle jacks and if that truck would've made it to the bridge, you know, there's a chance that, that it could've collapsed and wouldn't have been good for the other two people under the bridge, needless to say. But also, the bridge would've been about three and a half feet down and out of use. It, it would've been done. So, just so you're aware of that, that we're trying our best to get people educated and informed of what, what's going on, but they need to make a conscious effort to pay attention to signs and barricades, which obviously, they don't. The other thing is Holloway Construction started on the three-box culverts. They're up on thirty-eight. The one is in already and we're backfilling. So, the crew is helping finish their work and then making preparations for chip sealing and also mowing ahead of the paint crew. And the striping will start next Monday unless something comes up in the chip sealing. Hopefully, we'll start by the end of the week, which is done with our crew in Moody Counties. Then one of our highway employees, Gary Norgard, is still in the hospital and he will hopefully be back when he feels better, but it'll be very slow going, so. Best wishes for him, but it's, it's gonna take some time, so we're working around that. And other than that, Jenna addressed the, the auction stuff, so I guess I don't have any others unless there's a question.
Commissioner Pierce?
Right. We, we can certainly do that. Also, I had a call from the district manager of Oakwood State Park and wondered how I dare close Highway Six, the only way to Oakwood State Park. And so, I just left her a message. Probably better.
And I'm, and maybe this is directed more toward the commission. Last year, when we did our bridge and highway tour with Deck...
Last year, when we did our bridge and highway tour with Dick, I found that really helpful. And we're getting to the, soon we'll be in bad weather to do that. I just wondered if that's something we'd wanna do again in the next month or so and look at that bridge north of Bruce and maybe look at some other things? Or is nobody else interested in doing that?
Yeah. Just let me know or?
We could schedule it after a meeting. I mean, that's.
Yeah.
But other than that, I don't have anything.
Would it, would it work after the twenty-sixth, that meeting? Do it that afternoon? Yes, 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 yes. Sorry, knows?
What time is the first district meeting?
I'm hoping it's not gonna take four hours. I mean, we're talking a couple hours, aren't we? That's where it was last time.
Well, yeah, last time, we started after the AOC tour, but we made it about hour and a half.
I can try to get something lined up for after that commission meeting.
Be roughly about a thirty-mile circuit.
Okay.
Anything else for Dick? Thank you.
I don't think I have anything else, so I'm gonna take off if that's all right.
Okay, moving on, scheduled agenda items. Again, nine o'clock supplemental budget hearing, like the open public hearing. Opponents to the public hearing for the supplemental budget? Do we have any opponents? Ask again, any opponents to the supplemental budget hearing? Okay, move on to proponents. Proponents? Okay, like to close the public hearing? Motion approved.
Move approval.
Second.
Get a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next one's at nine, ten. Go down to regular business. Action to approve agreement number seventeen-six-nine, the state of South Dakota Department of Public Safety Office of Emergency Management, two thousand eighteen state and local agreement.
Move approval.
Second.
Get a motion and second. Any discussion? Bob, you have anything?
Yes, this is an agreement sent out yearly by the Office of Emergency Management under the Department of Public Safety. And it dictates what the county must do to receive funding from the state. And at this time, it's approximately forty-two thousand dollars a year that we receive from the state of South Dakota. And for that forty-two thousand, which is basically fifty percent of salaries and benefits, it allows us to stay more safe for our community citizens. Though, you know, I plan for Brookings County, but they plan for the whole state. So it allows us to all work together. And the requirements vary from training, exercises and things like that, things that we've already doing and we need to be doing. So it's.
Is there anything that concerns you in this that would not, would not be able to live up to?
No. No, sir. It's.
No other questions? Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B, action to approve agreement number seventeen-seven-zero, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highway made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move approval.
Second.
Get a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C, action to transfer cash from general fund one oh-one-four-nine-one-one-four-two-nine-two to county building fund three zero-one-three-three-seven-one-zero-zero-zero-zero in amount of four hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
This action goes along with the supplemental budget resolution that was just approved. That supplemental budget resolution gives you budget authority to move that, move the money around. This actually gives, does the cash side of things. So we have to, it's very similar to what the resolution was. One just deals with budget. This deals with the actual cash. This, as well as item D coming up.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, action to unassign two hundred and fifty thousand from three zero-one-two-two-seven-six-nine-three-zero-zero.
Move approval.
Second.
Get a motion and second.
And this is the fund balance that we had set aside within that building fund, the three oh-one fund for future 4H. Unassigning it rolls it back into just regular fund balance. And then when it comes time to finalize that purchase, we'll spend, we have now the cash authority within just the fund balance. Because that has to be spent before any assigned dollar. So what we're doing is unassigning it so we can spend it.
Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for general custodian slash maintenance worker.
Move approval.
Second.
Get a motion and second. Stacy?
Aaron Shear resigned his position as maintenance worker. And so we need to ref, we need to refill that position. Marty and I, this is, Aaron worked both halftime in the sheriff's and slash jail and halftime here at this building. Marty and I had some discussions last week on kind of looking toward the future, about future needs. You know, even now, there's, I think Marty could probably make use of a full-time maintenance person now over at the sheriff in jail. When the jail expansion happens, we'll definitely need someone full-time there. With the OAC coming online shortly as well, we're going to be with two, the two maintenance workers that we have, we're, we will need additional staff. Their, the two positions now are pretty busy. They have, you know, Aaron's position did the sheriff in the jail for half a day and then would be here in this building for half a day. The other position does the courthouse and the highway department. And the courthouse is top to bottom. Where this, at least, we have, we have the cleaning service that comes in nightly here. We don't have that for the courthouse, so that person is responsible for everything, dusting, vacuuming, floors, restrooms, everything over at the courthouse, that building, top to bottom. And then as well, as well as the highway department. So the two positions that we have are very busy right now with the facilities that we have and the needs we have currently. I think what we would, what I would foresee is bringing someone else on full-time. And I don't know when. Like I said, Marty probably could use somebody full-time almost now. But then we would have someone to still do this building and the OAC as well for a full-time position. We would, we would put one person full-time at the sheriff's office. We would keep the courthouse and highway as one and this building and OAC as another.
So you're looking at two?
One right now.
One right now to get us, to fill that, to get this going, yes. We don't have, and currently, that position, another position, isn't in any budget for two thousand and eighteen either. So we would need to potentially look at that. But right now, the request is for the one to get this position refilled. But I wanted to have the discussion to say, this is where we're at. When we're adding another facility like the OAC, it's going to take at least a halftime FTE out there to keep things, to keep things in order.
Is the transition team far enough along that a decision's been made that we would hire a maintenance person versus doing a cleaning service? Is that something we know yet?
I think we need to wait on.
We've got other stronger issues right now. Okay. The only, the only thing is, if we know that we're going to hire a maintenance person, we do know that the process takes a long time. And our costs, if we, if we did it now for hiring a maintenance person, we would only be advertising once and Laura would only be doing her thing once and we'd be looking for two persons. So there'd be some cost savings there if we thought we were going that way.
This is full-time position. And like Stacy said, it might be a part-time position out there.
No, what she's saying is.
No, what I'm saying is we would hire an additional full-time employee for the jail, specifically jail and sheriff's office. That person would be a full-time person. You would still have the position that John has with the courthouse and the highway department. And then we could utilize a full-time, a third full-time maintenance worker to be here and out at the OAC, a combined position.
I don't think we're quite at that point yet because we need some, we've got a little bit of footwork to do before we can do that. And I guess my question is, if we're going to advertise now and if the transition team has some time to think about that and they decide, I mean, it takes a while to do all of that. Would we have time in there to make a decision that out of this group, if we had two good applicants, that maybe we could move forward? Or would that not be possible by the twenty-sixth? If, you might know. We're waiting to hear back from somebody as to what we can go ahead and do. So I can't answer your question. Okay. Thank you.
But I think, I mean, if we had two good applicants, I think we could work through that process. I don't, I don't think that's an issue. I think we hire, we get this position advertised. But I wanted to make the board aware that you may be hearing from myself and from Marty again very shortly on needing an additional person.
Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
It's nine, ten, discussion and possible action to approve funding and additional forty-five thousand from the year two thousand and seventeen budget for East Central Behavioral Health. ECBH Board President Mary Beth Fishback will be here to address us.
I would move approval, so we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Mary Beth Fishback and I'm the current board president for East Central Behavioral Health. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity this morning to address you regarding this funding request. I am here on behalf of East Central to request the forty-five thousand dollars that was approved in the FY seventeen budget. As you all know, you've seen the letter that I sent to the commission. We have undergone a significant staffing change. And while that's ultimately in the best interest of the organization, it can cause some immediate financial strain. Our board and staff are a hundred percent committed to making sure that the organization runs smoothly and continues to offer high-quality services to the city and to the county. So these additional funds would allow us to, again, maintain those services and the overall operations of our organization while we're in this transition period. I'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
It's my understanding that at the current time, there are no, the, we're not using any of the services from East Central Behavioral Health as far as court services and those people. How, how are you going to change that? I mean, that's gonna take some work.
Yes. Yes, it is. So again, our, our current board is working very hard to engage with stakeholders in the community, repair and improve relationships and provide those services. Steph, you know, we do offer the twenty-four-seven emergency services and will continue to do so. So it is our ultimate goal that East Central can get through this transition and provide the necessary services to the community.
Financially, where are you at, I guess? Are you able to pay bills? Are you there? Is this an emergency situation? Or is this something that ongoing costs are gonna come up in this process that you're hoping need? Or is it something you need immediately that, you know what, we're at a point here where we just, day-to-day's getting tough? Where are you at in that, I guess?
Without having exact numbers in front of me, I do see this as kind of an immediate need for our organization. Again, you know, cover our main operating expenses and allow us to continue to provide services, again, while we transition. Ultimately, the, the board will be looking for a full-time permanent replacement for the organization. But that will take us some time. And so covering, covering services, providing on-call, so there really is an immediate need for us.
Try and answer some of that question, if I might, Mr. Chairman. Some of the services that we need to get back to require certain types of degrees to bill certain things out and to cover certain aspects of the services that East Central provides. And, and those contracts will cost us some, some cash to continue to bill for those things and continue to have that help to get through this transition period with staffing. So, yeah, to answer Commissioner Krogman's question, it's an immediate cash need. It's kind of sometimes always an immediate cash need for almost all mental health centers in the state. We're not unusual in that respect. Some of them are funded a little differently than we are, but at the same time, that doesn't, doesn't help us in that situation. So going back to your budget request before I was a commissioner, with the fifty-five thousand and the forty-five and the budget to provide if necessary, we are in the if-necessary state right at the moment. To answer Commissioner's question on, Mel's question on being able to serve court services, we hope to resolve that very quickly and get back into rotation there. I think that that should happen quickly. Obviously, those things take time a little bit and a little bit of cash flow to make sure that you maintain your services at a level that's acceptable to them to be able to provide those services. So that's kind of my take on where they're at as your appointed board member there.
And I would just like to say that I want to thank your board because I think you've made some difficult decisions as we've been moving through this summer and the Mental Health Task Force is active. And, and some things are happening that make me feel a little bit better about the fact that we're gonna start moving forward rather than backward on our mental health services. And whereas East Central might not be providing court services with what they need right now, they are still serving the citizens of Brookings County that we have a statutory obligation to. They are still providing mental health services to that group and I think we should be supportive of that.
When we voted for this, I guess my thought was, when we first started, we do the fifty-five and then forty-five would be if, you know, our state's attorney and our share of relationships improved. you know, our state's attorney and our share of relationships improved, and so that's kind of where I was looking at for the $45,000, kind of the string attached to it was, I guess, getting input from them and that. And obviously, I agree with LeAnn there, that you had to make some difficult decisions, and you're kind of in a tough place to assure that that's going to happen. And that's my question for the emergency portion of it is, you know, we have a responsibility to take care of our mental health and our citizens, and if this is an emergency, I don't want services to cease. I want to see this go forward, and I want those there. So I guess I'm going to vote for it now. I know there's be a request for $100,000 next year, and I guess I would stand by the $55,000 and $45,000 again for next year. And I guess, again, that's just my thought of here. I don't want stuff to stop. I want you to keep going, and if you need this as an emergency purposes, I'm willing to do it. But I'm not rubber-stapping it for next year. So I want to, still want to see the relationship with East Central Health work well with our county officials and our people involved. Court services, you know, true. I know there's work to be done there, so I guess that's where I'm at.
I mean, that's input we've had from Marty and also from the state's attorney's office. If you've been contacted and working towards a better working relationship, I guess.
Part-time custodial staff.
I think that they've took some very proactive and difficult steps, and but there is a definite need, and I think that the board is very proactive, and some of the bridges can be built back up in the court service out area.
That's kind of what I was looking forward to. Call the roll, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Thank you, Ed, for coming.
So, how would you like to spend that money?
Wisely.
I gave you a couple of options. Contingency or a supplemental budget process.
I would prefer to go contingency and do it immediately.
What are we having contingency?
Exactly.
We have, we have a few things on contingency. It's not bad, though, yet. I mean, we haven't, budgets are looking pretty good so far. I don't, my running list only had, I don't think it even has $10,000 of potential things.
Over 600 in there, right?
Yes. 620, 623, I don't know off the top of my head. Over 600,000.
It's looking a lot better than last year at this time.
Let me ask this, though. Didn't we budget for this? Didn't we have, at beginning of the season? Season, I should say. Beginning of the budget process, we had $55,000 with another $45,000 budgeted for $100,000, but we weren't going to-
No. Initially, we had put it into contingency. We had built that into the contingency, and then when we realized we can't go over 5% of our budget can be in contingency, we took it out. And I think at that time, the board said, if we decide to spend it, the contingency is still there. But no, it just went back into fund balance. We did not budget specifically for it. It is not a line item in the budget.
The advantage to contingency is we can disperse the funds immediately. If we do something on a budget, we have to go through the hearing process, and I would prefer not to do that.
And it would be, like I think in my notes, it'd be middle of October doing the supplemental budget process, by the time we did all of the publications and notices and the public hearings, so contingency, you know, we could-
I think that was our intent. I mean-
Contingency.
Yes. Contingency, okay.
Here we have about six minutes. Casey, you want to? Can you do yours in six minutes? Okay. Want to take a brief break?
Sure.
Take a five-minute break and be back. 9:30. To my opinion.
Well, I'll say it inside, never mind.
Like, call the meeting back to order. We have a 9:30 a.m. provisional budget public hearing. I'd like to open that. Open it to any opponents of provisional budget. Is there any opponents? I'd like to ask any opponents. Any non-proponents?
Pat Fishback, I just have a question. Does any of this involve the jail expansion? I'm sorry, I have not read up on what this is.
The budget?
This is the provisional, this is the budget for, the whole budget for 2018, so yes, it does involve the jail expansion. Vicki could probably speak to it. There is a levy for the bond that was approved. We are budgeting $500,000 for the, for bond proceeds for next year, for 2018.
And when it says the fiscal year annual budget will be approved on September 26th, is the opportunity for public hearing passed at that point, and it's just a commission action, or?
Yes, it will just be commission action at this time. The provisional budget, this public hearing has been published, and the entire budget, actually, the whole document, has been published in the papers.
Over the Labor Day weekend, or when was this published?
No, this was published,
I believe, August 31st. No, that was just the-
Just the notice. The budget was before that.
The week before. And it was in all of the four papers, four legal papers, the actual budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any other proponents? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Motion approved.
Second.
In motion and second. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, to Commissioner Krogman's suggestion that the East Central Behavioral Health budget line remain the same as it was for '17, $55,000, with the other $45,000, if we choose to do so out of contingency, that's not in this provisional budget right now.
Correct. The amount that you have in this budget for East Central is $55,000.
And I understand that their request is for $100,000. Is it possible to amend it today to match the '17 wording? $55,000 with $45,000 in contingency? Is this a place to make that change, an amendment to the budget, or is it at the final reading?
Do you want to do that?
No, you cannot amend the provisional budget at this time. Any changes will have to happen at annual budget time. You can't change this. This is what was published, so you're not going to be making any changes today to this. There are a number of things besides the East Central Behavioral Health requests, too, for the full $100,000. There are, you know, specifically the OAC, we have in this budget, it doesn't include insurance, it doesn't include any potential staff that we would need out there, it doesn't include any remodeling needs, so I think we need to look at that before the annual budget time. No, Marty has mentioned that there's maybe some need for some additional jail staff. If that is indeed the case, that would, that would need to be changed before before the annual budget is approved. And then at annual budget time, what you approve are just the changes. You approve the changes from what is presented today to the annual budget with the changes, and then that will appear in the annual budget document.
All right. Thank you.
When do we do that?
My suggestion would be to either, if you don't want to delve into that today, to, I would schedule a budget, another budget hearing between now and then, to, you know, to make changes the day of the annual budget. I think you have to have that discussion, an in-depth discussion on what changes you want, and then we can have those and present those on the 26th. And present you a clean annual budget document on the 26th.
For ease of staff, I mean, it'd be easier if we had a special meeting just for that.
Not only that, I mean, these are some big things that we need to discuss, and I think we need to have lengthy conversations about how we're going to do this. So I think it has to be in a special.
And I'm not even, I don't think we've even heard back yet on the insurance piece of it. We're going to reach out to our providers again and say we need this information, because they've been working on it. But we don't even have that amount yet, so.
Insurance, staff, we don't, a lot of different aspects of it, so.
And as far as the extra $55,000 for East Central, I don't know that you would, I think you could maybe make that as a be-it-noted item as part of the budget. I don't, we don't specifically earmark within contingency for anything. So I, you know, what the board did for this year for that was just note that we know that this request could be coming sometime in fiscal year 2017, and that it would come from contingency, or we would do a supplemental budget at that time. So I think-
But it's not a given. It was never a given that that $45,000 was going to be given. So, you know, I don't think we can look at that.
So if it's, you know, if the board would like to have another budget hearing time, I guess I would like to look at schedules now and and schedule that so I can notice that meeting.
The week of the convention, later in the week, is that look? I mean, we need to wait and hear back from insurance.
I would like to do it before that, because that week, we're going to be scrambling to get the agenda out. I would like to do it before that because that week we are going to be scrambling to get the, the agenda out. We need to get it out by the 22nd.
Are you looking at maybe the 12th next week?
So the week of, next week, sometime either later this week or next week.
How long of a meeting do we need?
Couple hours, I'd think.
Are we going to have numbers?
I'll get estimated numbers.
Do you guys have another gear up meeting or?
No, not at 12.
Before then?
Well-
It's supposed to be tomorrow, isn't it? Or no?
No, the 7th.
The 7th is when, yeah.
We-
Oh, wait a minute.
There, we do have a meeting tomorrow at 9.
Yeah, we do. 9 o'clock. Is that here?
No, it's out there again.
12th, 8:30, the 12th?
I have a hearing that starts at 10 o'clock. Would it, so I, I'll have to be back at my office for that. Could we start at 8 if we think it's going to take two hours?
That's fine, with me. Does that work for you, Vicki? I will let you know where that is.
Well, we've, we got a motion, I closed meeting, right? Call the roll?
Miller?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have a 10 o'clock scheduled. Want to start yours?
Yes.
Commission Department Director report.
First thing I had was an email from City Councilmember Dan Hanson. Had sent, I think, the email to the board requesting the one-time funding for that mental health resource listing. The Mental Health Task Force has been working on this. And this is kind of the first thing to come out of the, this. The, the city council already approved this funding on August 22nd. What it is, is a two-year contract with the 2-1-1 program to basically create this listing and, and do this for us. And year one cost is 1850 for the entire year. Year two cost is 1350. The city approved, the city council already approved fully funding this request from the task force. Councilmember Hanson had requested that the county pay for half. 925 for fiscal year 2017 and 675 for fiscal year 2018. And again, that can be worked into the annual budget. The 675 as far as the 925 this year, that could be taken from contingency. And again, I don't have, I didn't have this, I, this is just a discussion item on my report. So there would not be, you know, if you're going to take any action on this, I would have it on the agenda for the 26th as an action item for the board.
Any thoughts?
I'm in favor of this in that we're participating in the Mental Health Committee process. And we're not talking a lot of money here. And if they want to do some things to start moving some items forward before they get their final report out, I think we should be supportive of that.
I am in favor of it also, but I, is, could that come out of the commission budget?
Potentially. Well, it would come out of, if you want to take it out of the commission budget. And then if, if at the end of the year, the commission budget comes up short, we could supplement it with contingency.
I'd rather do it that way, I think.
Yep.
Well, it's worth putting on the agenda for the 26th.
And what they're looking at doing is after these first two years, finding a different group outside of the task force or the city or the, you know, this county or the school to, to continue with this listing that would be available through 2-1-1.
But this buys them some time. And I agree with Commissioner Pierce. We need to, we need to step up and, and help.
The group that will probably continue to raise funds and take this expense over is, looks like it'll be the united way right now. Conversations are with them to take it over because they do provide some funds for 2-1-1 at this point in time. So this would be in addition to, to what they've already provided. So that's, they're looking, at least the, the task force is looking for somebody to take it over versus the city or the county paying for it in the future. I agree with the two commissioners, the mental health, it's kind of the county's responsibility, not necessarily the city's. They haven't really delved into this area, but they did put this commission together, this committee. So I, would have been nice if we'd been asked before they approved it because right now they're going to pay for it, so we're actually, a secondary thought. I was even thought maybe the school district ought to pay for part of it too. But at this point in time, I think the funding, if we split it between the two entities, the city and the county, I think that's fine.
So I'll have that on your next agenda as an action item. As part of my report, you received an invitation to the Prairie Nightingale Society event Monday, the 25th of this month at 6:00 p.m. I need to RSVP by Friday or you can do that individually as well. But if you'd like me to RSVP for you, please let me know. Leadership Brookings, it's a ways off, and I had the date wrong. It's actually Tuesday, the 12th, not Tuesday, December 13th, 13th of the Wednesday. I must have looked at the wrong calendar, but-
The 12th of December?
Yes, it's Tuesday, December 12th.
What's that?
Leadership Brookings comes and they ask, you know, the department heads as well as, it would be nice to have at least one commissioner.
It's nice to have more than one commissioner. That's too much for one.
From 10, it's from 10 to 10:45 and they meet next door in the community room. So if you're available, you can let me know. You don't have to let me know today. But that's, I wanted to correct that date and get that on your calendar if you are able to attend that. Also, I received an email yesterday from Kevin, I hope I'm pronouncing this right, Kevin Kuba with Otter Tail Power requesting a letter of support from the Commission for the Astoria Station Project. I believe Commissioners Pierce and Bartley attended that open house last week and may have some additional comments on that. He provided me with sample letter, the commission did a, a letter of support for the Deer Creek project as that was coming online a number of years ago. So if this is something that you're interested in doing, I would draft that and have that on your, on the, the 26th agenda as well.
Is that located in Dool County or Brookings County?
The actual station, I believe, is in, just north in Dool County. It's about an half north and a little bit west of Astoria itself.
Okay.
One of the things we did learn while we were there was that they will have a local review committee, much like they did for Deer Creek. It will have a representative from Brookings County because we're in a six-mile diameter around the plant itself. And it will review economic impact, housing, construction, roads, schools. All those things are taken into consideration when the local review committee presents a report. I served on that committee as a city coun, counselor back for Deer Creek. And I'm not sure, Larry, did you serve on that? We had a county representative, Dennis Falcone was the chairman of it. He was appointed by the county commission for Deer Creek.
I, no, I wasn't.
You weren't involved, okay. We, they had at that point-
I met with them many times.
Yeah, they had three people, myself from the city, Danny from the, the county and then somebody from the school district at that time. Our school district will not be involved, but the county is involved. We'll have to have representatives, so I don't know when they're going to ask for us to make that appointment. But a letter of support is the first step to, to get to that. Most of their stuff has been submitted to the PUC. This will go in addition to that.
Would you like me to have, draft a letter and have that on the agenda for the 26th?
Sure.
Okay, I will do that. Quick update on the OAC. I, myself and Sean Plowman, our IT specialist, and Laura, our HR specialist, along with Commissioners Krogman and Miller, went out to the OAC last Wednesday and worked with Elisa Brech, the executive director out there. And we went through about a third of the building and reviewed some things with her. And we'll do that again tomorrow. Our, our group will go out there and do either, I think, probably the archery range. I think we'll go through that tomorrow. I think that's in store. So I'll continue to provide updates on that as we're going through that facility. Some upcoming dates, next Monday, September 11th at 7:00 p.m. is the jail expansion open house here in this room in the commission chambers. Presentation and some question and answer session at 7:30 that evening. I've been advertising for that already and you've maybe heard me on the radio. I've had some comments about that. There's some ads running on the radio, so, too, so for that. Next Friday, the 15th, is, as Bob had mentioned, is his National Preparedness Day event here. First floor of this building from, I believe it's from 1 until 5 downstairs. Then we all head out to, or most of us are heading out to Rapid City, the 17th through the 20th of this month for the SDACC Fall Convention. I will be getting you room information and confirmation numbers as we get those rooms updated. We have the rooms, I'm just, as we get those, that information, as it gets closer, I'll get that information to you. And then again, later in the month is the Juvenile Justice Summit. But I think I've just kind of kept that on there. As an FYI, the 26th, we do have a meeting, so I'm not sure if anyone from here will be able to attend or not. So that's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Would you RSVP me for the Prairie Nightingale?
Yeah. Anything else?
Any other questions? Okay, we got about eight minutes. Terry, one of the deputy states?
As Marty noted, there has been a noted increase in the involuntary mental commitments. I'm not sure what that's attributable to. It usually does increase in the fall. But why there's been so many this month is, I'm not quite sure. Also, school's back in session, so, as Marty noted, we are in, dealing with an increase in serious assaults and simple assaults. But we also have our back-to-school crimes too. So we're continuing to be busy and glad to see the football team back in school. But not, you know, like to have a nice, quiet summer was nice, I guess, so. But other than that, there really isn't anything else.
Okay. Commission reports, Leanne?
On August 23rd, I did the conservation tour with the, most of the rest of you. It was very interesting. Always learn when we do that tour. It's great to see what's going on with some of those farm programs in, in Brookings County. On August 28th, I went to the Otter Tail Power Program with Commissioner Bartley. And it, and it is in Dool County. They figure that the, they'll pay property taxes totaling approximately $3 million within the five years of operation in Dool County. And they'll be paying approximately $1 million each subsequent year after that to the county. There will be about 50 construction jobs. And some of those people, I'm thinking, will be from around our, from Brookings County when they start building. They said there'll be a peak of 70 workers during the height of construction. They expect to spend about $30 million in labor costs building. When it's done, and this was the thing that was interesting to me, there'll only be three to five full-time people working there. They won't have a lot of staff once they get everything done. The other interesting thing for me is looking at Brookings County. What they're serving is our eastern part of, of our county. So they, they provide service and, and our citizens will get service through White and Elkton and so forth, all the way down to Sioux Falls. So that was, that was very interesting. And then on August 30th, I attended the CapEx 2020 celebration. And I'm, that's just very, very interesting. And one of the things that they talked about is that 25% right now of the energy is coming from renewable resources, which is really wind energy. And for us, what difference that's going to make. On August 30th, I met with Terry, Bob and Richard. We worked on zoning ordinances again. And we're, I, I know I keep telling you this each time, but we are moving forward little bit by little bit. We're, we're getting some stuff done. And that would be my report.
Commissioner Bartley?
Well, you covered everything for me. Thank you. On August 23rd, I also attended the Brookings County Conservation Tour. It was my very first tour. I saw some roads in Brookings that I didn't know existed and some very interesting conservation plans and programs that are out there. So that was, that was well worth the, the time and they served a great lunch. On the 28th, I had an East Central Board of Health board meeting, the results of what you saw today. Also attended the Otter Tail Open House in Astoria with Commissioner Pierce. Just, she covered everything except for the fact that it is a peak operating station. In other words, I've got a jet engine that produces power. It turns a turbine and they produce, it's a little different than the Deer Creek station and it has two jet engines that produce power. And then they have a heat exchanger that also produces power after the other turbine. So that's a, a double backup. This is a little smaller station. But still, $11 million project. So I, and again, I, I think we'll, there'll be a request for Commissioner Jensen to appoint somebody to their local review task force. Their work has to be done by, I think, May of, of 2018 before that gets finished. Also, on the 30th, the CapEx 2020 ribbon cutting. Interesting to see how much money is involved and how many different utilities were involved to, to put that together. The collaborative effort there was pretty impressive to, to get a line built to, to move electricity from our wind to other places and in addition to keeping some of it local here. So, you know, probably 10 years ago that was discussed as they were starting to put this together. And my thought was they'll never get all those people to agree to spend money on this line. Even though it is, is essential for wind energy to succeed here, they'll never get it done. Well, they got it done and they got it done on time, on budget. So it was pretty impressive. 31st, SDSU Seed Lab ribbon cutting. I attended that and that's a beautiful facility. I also learned some things about seed I didn't know. They're moving into that building at this point in time. Their laboratories are, get set, to get set up. They're not yet. Their, their rooms are empty, but it's pretty impressive to look at that facility and the needs to the, the farm community, not only in South Dakota, but nationally and internationally with what they, they do with research there. And that concludes my report.
Commissioner Krogman?
Yeah, on the 23rd, we had the conservation tour, which is always nice. Again, a great lunch and good to see all what's going on out there under conservation. The 25th, my meeting with Stacy and Commissioner Miller about the OAC. On 29th, Commissioner Miller and I met again on the OAC. And then on the 30th, we met with, again, Lisa out there at the OAC for some transition meetings there, so moving forward. And then on the 31st, we had the Brookings Health meeting. We were fortunate to have it out at the Dyckhouse Center there because of the Jack's Football Game on Thursday. So we had the meeting prior to the game and did that and got that done. And so with, you know, Justin Sell on the board there, he offered to have the meeting a little earlier and before the game. So that worked out well, so we could attend the game, so that's it.
On the 23rd, I also attended the conservation tour. And as Commissioner Pierce mentioned, you, you always learn something. And we have a delightful little event center just right outside of Brookings that was just fabulous. The, the things that they're growing out there and the conservation tricks that they're doing. And it, it's always very interesting and I'd like to thank- doing, and it's always very interesting, and I'd like to thank the Conservation District for inviting us. On the August 25th, as Ryan mentioned, we met to talk about the transition into the OAC. On the 29th, I met with Commissioner Krogman again. We put some questions together with the Gun Range Committee, and at 5:30, I attended their meeting. On August 30th, we had the transition meeting at the Outdoor Adventure Center, and we have a lot of work to do. And then at 2 o'clock, we had a conference call for the Jail Expansion Committee, and that's my report.
I don't have a lot. Did meet with Stephanie with the Gun Range Volunteers, positive meeting. I guess they're excited about our purchase and excited to move forward. That's about all I had. Did go out to the fair and did a brief walkthrough. It looks like numbers were consistent with last year out there, so that's my report. We have a scheduled 10 o'clock presentation. BKVA Presentation on a Proposed Jail Expansion Project. I'd like you to board.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see you all.
Morning.
So today's information is, I try not to bang on this when I speak. Today's presentation is to really kind of bring you up to speed on some of the information that's occurred and what we've been developing with the committee. It's really not an action discussion as much or an item that requires your actions, more of a just discussion to bring you up to speed. So as you all know, some time ago, back, I think it was, was it June 1st, I believe, was when we went to the Board of Adjustment to go for a variance hearing, and that was denied at the time, so we came back to the committee and looked at some other alternatives. The first slide, a little hard to see up on the, up the screen, but what, what it defines is, in the first go-round, we asked for a zero lot line variance. In the downtown area, just a block over in this area to the west of us, a lot of the businesses are built right at the edge of the sidewalk. When we planned the first kind of layout to meet the program needs for the jail, we were utilizing that to, to provide the kind of the space and make that work. One of the things that was discussed with BOA was the idea to modify those setbacks slightly to try to create a little more buffer that we were hearing from the neighborhood that they were, that they were asking about rather than building directly against the sidewalk. This shows, along 4th, it shows the idea of creating a seven-foot setback. I should back up one second as well. The property is zoned residential, and the courthouse is not residential, so it's really, it's, it's an anomaly. It really doesn't quite fall within those guidelines. Also, because the county owns the entire block, normally a 25-foot setback might be on the front and rear of the property, because the property, because the facility is on the entire block, they've imposed the 25-foot setback on all four corners. So there's clearly some hardships that are, that are in place by the fact that this property is zoned for residential and it's needed for a governmental-type facility. When it was brought up in the BOA meeting, the purpose of setting the 25-foot setback, what was shared with us from the city, was that's typically to allow for, for the cars in the driveway to not obstruct the sidewalk. So again, a residential kind of requirement that doesn't apply to this. So what this diagram shows is that if we go back to the city for a setback variance, because we're not going to be able to achieve the 25-foot setback, it just, the existing face of the jail is the way it is right now, and there's no way we can build the space that's required and still respect the west elevation of the courthouse. All along, what we've been trying to do is hold the, the west face of the new addition back so it doesn't kind of start to impose upon or kind of, you know, historically kind of, kind of project out past that west elevation. It's a, it's a historic concern. So again, we held it back. This shows the idea of the potential setbacks that could be achieved. Along 7th, we show at the very corner, 10, 10 feet or so off of 4th Street, 13, 8, 13 feet, 8 inches off of 7th Avenue, and as it comes down a little bit, that diminishes to about 8 foot 4. But again, trying to give a little bit or as much as possible instead of a zero lot line, a more of a buffer. Another thing that was discussed on this site plan was the idea of extending the curb, kind of the bump out that occurs at the intersection of 4th Street and 7th Avenue. There were some concerns brought up about movement and sightlines and making sure this was a safe corner for all those folks that walked back and forth to the farmer's market and to downtown and just to make sure it's a little more respectful to neighborhood. I believe this was on the city's plan to do this work, Sheriff. I think we talked about that a little bit, that the bump out, but the question would be funding for it. So I think i- if it's in line with what the city is hoping to do, if it approves this project, I think one of the things that we looked at in the construction costs is it's not a big implication or a big kind of imposition on the project, maybe it should be done with part of this to kind of help to make sure that things are going well with the development of the site. So that's, that, this is showing where the new proposed layout would be, how it provides a little bit more setback than from the zero lot line that we had previously shown. The next page really just is primarily landscaping. There is a mistake on that, I apologize. Those aren't 6th Street and 7th Street, those are the avenues, as you all know. But the, the intention of this is really to show that we're not diminishing any of the landscape that is west of the existing courthouse. We're retaining all that landscaping on the west side, and we will be adding, excuse me, we will be adding landscaping north of the proposed Detention Center addition and trying to do as much as we can to kind of buffer it and soften its, its, its feel to the neighborhood. It would be very similar to the church across the street and others that have that kind of two-story mass in relationship to the neighborhood. So to respond to some of the concerns that I think we all heard at the, at the public hearing at the Board of Adjustments, it was, okay, we don't want it downtown. What are the other options? So to make sure that, that, that was vetted out fully, we worked with the committee to define and explore where could, can there, are there some off-site options? What would, what are the, what's the criteria? What's the implications? What does this off-site potential project look like? Well, the criteria for a detention facility, we looked at, you need a minimum of five acres. Access to utilities, sewer and water are very important. Now, some of the property you'll see on the next page doesn't have good access, and that causes some additional cost as far as utilities. Directs access to a main road, again, it, it has to do with the amount of development cost. If it's tucked back and we've got to develop, if you all have to develop a dirt road into a, into a, you know, into a fully functional access road, that adds cost to the project. And then making sure that the zoning, wherever this would be looked at, would, would not be in hindrance to any other zoning, that it would comply with what would be, would be done. So you can see what we did is, is rather than defining an exact site in this diagram, we're saying we looked at, we looked at 10 viable sites within a three-mile radius. On the next page, these were five of the sites that were looked at, and they all, again, looking at the parameter, the first one is the size. And, and with a new site, and we'll talk about it in the pros and cons, there's more freedom on a, on a greenfield site. You, the footprint of the jail does not have to kind of mold or morph itself around some existing conditions. It's pretty much a rectangular box that serves the function needed. Option 6 had 8-inch sewer and water within 300 feet of the site, so in the cost estimate we did, that's well within the limitations of the site development cost that we had on there. Same thing with option 7, which is on the left-hand side as well. There was a 15-inch sewer and a 4-inch water within 600 feet. You know, you're talking anywhere from $30,000 to $60,000 to bring the utilities directly to a site, again, within those, within the parameters of the estimate that was developed. Site option 8 had a 30-inch sewer within 300 feet, now 8-inch water within 1,300 feet. And again, this was pushing at the high end, bringing the water to the site is gonna, is gonna cost some additional funds, but again, we felt that was right within the parameters of where we estimated. However, when you got to sites, options 9 and 10, 9 had a 10-inch sewer, 2-inch water, 2-inch, just to clarify, the size of the water starts to get a little marginal when you start to have a sprinkler system. It's, it's really on the tight end, and it probably would have to go to a 4-inch. But the implications of, of increasing the water and sewer, or the water, rather, and bringing the sewer and water to the site that's approximately 5,000 feet away could be in the neighborhood of $500,000. And I want to clarify to the commission that these estimates are, are big-picture estimates. We haven't refined and delineated every little fine tooth. These are general estimates at this level of study analysis. Option 10, the same, very similar to option 9, a 10-inch sewer and an 8-inch water about 5,000 feet away, and again, this was right in the neighborhood. And actually, I'll be honest with you, I think that's a slight mistake. I think that one was closer to 6,500 feet away. This was further. I actually think there's a typo there, but that was, 650,000 was estimated increase. I will, I will verify that number, but I think that was an error, because I know it was a little further distance. The next series really of information helped to show a better portrayal of what this facility could look like. So again, I think one of the, one of the initial thoughts or some of the concerns we heard from the committee was the, the location of the building as it related to the sidewalk and trying to buffer that a little bit. And we heard, you know, we heard a lot of concern for the aesthetics, you know, is, is this gonna, you know, damage the quality of the aesthetic of the courthouse? What's it gonna be like in the neighborhood? So we, we, we developed some more details. We actually changed the design to add some more historic characters to it, more, more features to it. So this, of course, is looking east across the, the front of the courthouse over towards the Detention Center. The next page, a little slightly different angle, and we ghost out some of the trees, but you can start to see that, you know, what we're trying to do is use materials that are respectful of the courthouse, some stone and some pattern of materials that really will pick up on that historic quality, not trying to mimic it, but respect it in a way that it will complement it when it's built. So this, this starts to give an idea of that angle. The next one, which is looking from 4th Street to 6th, at the corner of 4th and 6th, again, so that's the heavy vegetation that you currently see when you're looking kind of to the, would be southwest from that corner. The next image, really somewhat, again, we ghost the trees because we're trying to show what the building looks like, but you can see there's a lot of vegetation from looking from the museum and the library side, looking across, you're really seeing a lot of vegetation that's in front of it. But again, we're trying to design a building that is complementary to what's currently there as far as materials and detailing. The next image then applies the trees as they really would be when they're in foliage, foliage, and it really can see that it screens out from that view a lot of what you would see with the addition on that side. The next is looking across from 7th and 4th, kind of looking to the southwest and, you know, the inmate yard there, the, the rec yard and the, and the gates and whatnot and the dumpsters that are currently are on that corner, looking down to the courthouse. The next image would be what the addition would look like. It's pulled back a little bit from across the street, but you can see that, again, we're starting to, again, bring in windows, bring in patterns, bring in materiality to respect it. The other thing that came up in the committee, too, which was a little bit of concern, and you all know, the Law Enforcement Center, Detention Center has a certain brick and a certain color and a cornice design that really is not, is a different building design than the courthouse that's there. Part of the revised estimate and part of the revised renderings show that we are looking at painting and painting the existing brick of the Detention Center as well as reworking all the fascia trim, the soffit detailing, again, to help make the existing Detention Center and Law Enforcement Center blend a little bit with, more with this new design. So it's not conflicting and, and kind of conglomeration of multiple styles, multiple materials, trying to do, do additional work to make it blend better, and that's what the renderings are starting to indicate. The next one is just a close-up of that corner at 4th Street and 6th Avenue. It's a little hard to see because of the perspective, but that is showing the bump out at the corner, so we're adding some landscape there and adding some additional landscape at the building as well as trees along the boulevard and, and really trying to just soften up the corner a little bit as it starts to meet the building, or starts to meet the The next is really just looking directly south from across the alley over to the church and the buildings to the north, looking to see what you see currently when you cross that area now. And then the next image shows what you'd see as you looked across there with the new building and how that would, again, trying to use massing of materials in a way that break it up and don't make the building seem objectionable, make it blend better with the neighborhood. And this, again, another rendering, I think this was looking across the street from the west, similar to what we saw before, and again, another just rendering showing how it would kind of continue to look. And you can see vertically, that was another concern, is, is, you know, anything that starts to compete with the height of the courthouse, again, historically, that's, that's not a good way to go, and you can see that the height of this is much lower than the existing courthouse as well. The estimate that we had shown, the commission approved some time ago, basically had looked at a simpler jail. We were looking at a pre-cas paneled system, not, not, not a utilitarian or industrial, but something that was not of a high level of detail that we're currently showing to try to, to try to appease the neighborhood in the direction things are going. It was also slightly larger in some areas because of the, of the setback of the zero lot line, and we were also assuming a slightly different construction timeline than we're looking at now. So these were the numbers that were presented to the commission some time ago, I forgot the exact date. We were looking at about a $10,800,000 project with the proceeds, the cash reserves currently. Roughly, the project, total project cost was about $7,339,599. So that's where we were when we, on the first initial review that you all approved. The next page then is the revised estimate, and again, it's a, it's a 40,000-foot estimate, but this is based on our experience in doing these types of projects. We've got a number of them that are going around the Midwest right now, so we understand the implications of detention and construction cost, and that's what these are based on. So this is the new design. The cost of construction went up because now we're looking at some stone veneers, we're looking at some crown detailing, we're looking at some approaches, some windows being applied that weren't applied before, things that are increasing the construction cost. And we've also, we're looking at trying to fast-track to get construction moving, but there's a slight implication of that as well. So the increase to creating a more aesthetically pleasing setup that blends a little bit more and appeases the neighborhood and the neighborhood concerns a little bit more is an increase of about $1.8 million from what we'd estimated before. Again, as we move into the design further, we're going to be developing much more detailed estimates, and our goal would be, hopefully, as things move ahead, we're finding a little bit of savings, we're finding a little bit of efficiency. So again, these are, I'd rather present a number to you that's a little more on the conservative side than come back later and saying we were under. So these might be a little higher, but again, they're within, within a level of reality. So again, you can see that increase where the total with the cash reserves on the previous one, about 7.3 million, now we're showing about 9.1 million. And again, the, the big impacts were time and the overall design, time of construction started. The next page was the off-site construction. So the off-site construction, the big issues or items associated with the cost of the off-site construction is the land cost. So now potentially, county is acquiring and purchasing five acres of land that you don't currently have. There's a little slightly bigger building area. At the initial design option, on, the onsite option, we're remodeling, I think, a couple thousand square feet or actually more than that, almost 5,000 square feet, and almost 5,000 square feet, we're remodeling of the existing jail to make that work, so now we're building that new area off-site. So we're actually building some more off-site. Plus, we still need to utilize, in this plan, we're still utilizing the 24/7 and the jail holding components of the existing jail. So we've got to rework some of those areas still to provide the increased 24/7 space and the modified and appropriate 24/7 space needed. So there is some investment that's still occurring in the existing jail, even with the off-site option. So with all the factors, and the 25,000, we, we assumed a $25,000 per acre, just an assumption at this point in time, and so this is about a $3.4 million increase over what we had shown to you previously in the first option. So it's 3.4 above the other one or above the refined, the revised one, it's still about $1.6 million of estimated increase. Again, trying to create some efficiency as we go, but right now, that's a big-picture estimate. Excuse me. On the next page, we looked at, so, you know, it's one thing to say there's additional construction costs from one to the other. We also stepped back and said, okay, what are the operational implications of, of having an onsite jail versus an off-site jail? And what that does is, is if the courts were to remain where they are in the courthouse, then there's a transportation impact that occurs with the jail, and working with the sheriff and his staff and Bart, we kind of went through, okay, And working with the sheriff and his staff and Bart, we kind of went through, okay, what are those situations? Well, at the existing jail, the functions that would remain at the jails, inmate holding, four courts hearings would remain there. The 24/7 sobriety program would remain onsite. And keeping those operations there has a certain staffing impact. And what this sheet starts to talk about is the off-site transportation. So the need for additional correctional officers and additional deputies to move those inmates back and forth from the jail to the courts. And basically, they're, you know, they're staying with them once they bring them over. They're keeping them in a modified old, in the holding area of the old jail, and then moving them into court. And then in addition to that, you have staff that now are going to be at the jail needed here that they're currently doing additional functions over at the jail. So by splitting it, it's operationally inefficient. And what this shows is potentially there's many, I think it was six additional correctional officers, six additional staff, that over the long term, and, you know, we looked at a yearly cost, and we projected it over 20 years, because most bond funds are over 20 years, and said, okay, here's what this staff impact could be. Correctional officers could be another $420,000 a year. The transport officers could add for another $300,000 per year. And so when you add that up and look at it over 20 years, it could have a $15 million operational impact. Now, having said that, one thing we didn't go through extensively with the committee, if somebody were to ask me, well, how do we mitigate that operational impact? Well, you'd have to build a justice center off-site. So if your judges were amenable to, either you pick up and move all of your courts' functions off-site, or you keep part of the courts' functions here and move other courts' functions off, and you move probation, so you move the justice functions out. That would start to minimize, well, it would negate the majority of your cost on this operational impact. But you'd be building more off-site. Next sheet addressed some of the pros and cons with each of the options. The first on the left-hand side is the existing jail courthouse site. The pros with that is decreased operational costs, like we just talked about with the two separate facilities, better accessibility to the entire judicial system, and the fact that they're all connected. Probation, law enforcement, jail, they're all there, working together. So there's better access back and forth, access from the public. If somebody's going from court to jail for visitation or anything like that, again, everything is right there. And it's better use of your existing space. We're remodeling the building, we're utilizing that building, we're not building all new. The cons is the community concerns. We don't know how they're going to respond to the aesthetic, but we know previously there were some concerns. Concerns for public safety, but I'm not sure that was a concern as far as, again, we're reiterating some of the things we heard, but there's no change in public safety from what we see. If anything, it's a little more enhanced, the fact that it's right there. There is the expansion capabilities of off-site versus onsite. Off-site is a little easier. You have a green field, you can expand, you can plan, you can do what you need to. There is some limitation. There is expansion capability on that site, but it would have to be properly planned. As far as the off-site options, the pros, it's able to develop an ideal jail plan. So again, no limitations, you can develop your rectangular box, the most efficient layout. The construction cost would be lower for building on that site, and the timeframe to expedite the project would be a little bit quicker to go on that site as well. And like I mentioned previously, expandability is very good on that site. Some of the cons, it's the operational impact of moving back and forth that we mentioned for probation, for courts, for jail transport, is not as efficient as it could be. Public access for visitation, again, it's a slight impact, but that was something that was looked at. Backup is also something to consider. When you have a law enforcement center connected to your jail, if you do have an incident that occurs in the jail, your law enforcement staff are right there that can help to support if there's an incident. If the law enforcement sheriff's office stays where they're at, and an incident occurs at the jail, well, now they're having the courts to get in their cars to go over. It's, the support is not as quick. So it does have potential impact if a major, if an event occurs. Initially, when we developed the schedule, in my mind, I was thinking that there'd be a much bigger time impact to planning the onsite construction versus off-site. Now, the onsite implications are, we're based, you know, we'll talk about it a little bit more, but there's a public, the town hall meeting. We're going to come back to the commission on September 26th and kind of get some direction at that point in time, based on some additional information. And at that point in time, if we stay onsite, we've got to go back through the Board of Appeals to have them review and hopefully approve the additional, the revised variance. We have to go through the Historic Commission and go through their process to confirm and verify the direction things are heading to, work in that direction. And then the schedule kind of folds out based on the typical planning and design processes and construction. And so really, what we're showing is that the onsite option, hopefully, we're starting construction in about a year from now. And based on, there's a little bit of phasing that would occur with the onsite option, and completing construction sometime, I think in February, January 2020. That's a general timeline. What we do is put historic timelines in doing this kind of work out there. Again, if we can create some efficiency with a contractor when things are brought on, we look at that. But these are general timelines. The off-site option, the plan would be, the first hurdle would be finding and kind of finalizing the property that the county would be purchasing, negotiating that property, and then moving forward with that. So there's, the roadblocks on the off-site are a little bit less. And what that comes to, when you look at the timeline, is basically could be two to three months, maybe even two to four months, quicker project to build off-site because you don't have the same limitations, the same roadblocks. In a summary, on the next page, basically, as I mentioned previously, we've gone to further variance requests to the Board of Adjustments for the zero-lot line, which was denied. Since then, from June to September, we've been working with the committee to explore the other options to properly address some of the concerns that were heard, and make sure we're providing an appropriate facility that's going to serve the county for the long term. We talked about the project cost and the difference from the originally approved number to the adjusted courthouse one, to the off-site number. It gives a kind of a level of magnitude of what we would expect those to be. As I mentioned on the schedule, it's really a minimal impact. The courthouse option, the review, the process and the phasing that we could do, that we talked about, and it could add a couple, two to three months, maybe toward two to four months in the long term. Operational impact is a big one. Off-site operational will require adding additional staff for the transport and the 24/7 program. And those were some of the big issues with that. And then the next step says, was mentioned, the town hall meeting on September 11th at 7:00 PM. And then the coming back, we're going to have another committee meeting on September 14th to review some of the information that we've heard from the community and what the next steps might be, so we can then update and present some additional material to all of you on the 26th. So with that, I tried to go through it succinctly without being too laborious. So I'm here for any questions you all might have.
The addition, the new part of the jail, is that one story?
Yes, yes.
So in all of the renderings, it looks taller. It looks taller than two stories. Why does it look so big if it's one story?
I wanted to clarify. So if you look at, like there, right there, that is technically, in jail terms, that's one story, but it has a mezzanine. So the way that we're achieving the number of beds needed for the facility is basically you have these cells on one level and cells stacked up on another. And it's not truly a two-story, it's what's considered a mezzanine. So I think the height of that is maybe 22 feet, 24 feet, but it's not a true two-story. But it feels like it. You're absolutely right, Commissioner.
And one of the questions that many members of the public have asked me is whether we consider doing a garden level for the first floor so that it didn't look so tall. Is that something that you looked at?
You would, to get rid of that height, that second-level band, you'd have to get rid of the entire, we had, I think we were looking at 20 cell, you'd be reducing your cells by half. So you, so the functionality of it would be way down.
So I'm not asking about reducing the number of cells. What I'm asking about is putting part of the first level, which is the main floor, at a garden level in the ground so that it wasn't so tall.
Oh, pushing it below. And the problem, it gets an ADA, an accessibility and movement, and that's the, the problem is, so when you think about, it's all about movement and flow. So when you think about relationship of coming over from the existing jail and where we're building the existing jail, we're at, they're at grade level, right? We can't drop them, they're at a certain level. When you come into the Sallyport where you're bringing inmates into the facility, you're bringing them at a car level at a certain level. So if you try to drop that whole section down, I'm not saying it couldn't be, but it adds ramps and stairs and a level of operational complexity that is not good. I mean, it's hard to see in that plan, but it, you're taking that entire, I didn't, Stacy, if you could, if you're, are you running the ship? Can you zoom in for a second? Would you zoom in on the housing pod that's kind of right below the blockout? Just go a little bit to the east, right there. So if you can see those little stairs that go up, that little podular wagon wheel design, that's the housing unit, and that's the piece that is basically a story and a half, that has the mezzanine. If you're trying to minimize height, because everything else is simply one story, the kitchen and the rec areas, we make those a little bit higher just for space of the ducting and the space for rec and that, but not very high. But to try to reduce that area and drop that whole thing down in the ground, you have all kinds of stairs and ramps that I would just be concerned from a flow standpoint. It adds a level of complexity. I would be very concerned with it. Well, actually, to tell you the truth, it would add accessibility issues. We'd have to add an elevator too. It would clearly add an elevator to that design.
And then on a different topic, when, and then I'll be done with my comments, where we talked about the pros and cons, I noticed that one of the things that was not included in there on the cons of moving off-site is the additional costs that we would have for our state's attorney's office and our public defenders in meeting with defendants at the jail, or the cost, and maybe we don't care about the cost to the state because court services officers would have to travel to the new detention center. And the other thing, I'm not sure that it's included in there, and maybe it, maybe the impact security response to jail, maybe that's what this means, but currently at the courthouse, there's a panic button, and that's still there, is that correct, Marty? Okay. So if there's a problem in a courtroom, and there's usually one officer that's there that's staffing the courtroom, if there's an emergency, a button is pushed and immediately staff from the jail, our law enforcement officers come to the courtroom to assist whatever that problem is. And I don't see that, we've talked in here, how we would provide rapid response is the only way I can think of that, when you have an emergency in a courtroom, if we've got all of our law enforcement officers somewhere else.
And I think part of, and correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the additional correctional staff and part of the staff is to have, is to have those individuals there when the inmates are there, which is the majority of the time. And so if there was an incident, you'd still have the ability to lock those individuals down and respond to an event. I think that would be appropriate.
But that isn't actually what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about, if you have a shooter in a courtroom right now, you push that panic button, and you have law enforcement onsite within maybe 90 seconds, would that be a fair response rate? If we're three miles away, your correctional, your one correctional officer isn't going to be able to provide a whole lot of assistance for that.
So part of the analysis was that, when, what I was getting from, in talking to Bart and the sheriff, was that there will be staff at the existing jail for court movement.
Okay.
And 24/7.
Okay.
So those people would still be there to respond to an incident.
Okay.
That comes with the additional two deputies on the operational cost, because they would also be there to handle any emergencies at the courthouse.
Okay. Thank you. Those were all of my questions.
Ms. Crowell.
When you showed us the off-site options, there were 10, and we only saw six through 10. The other ones didn't have water, why didn't we see the one through five?
I think it may be a little confusing. I believe we started with option one, if I remember correctly, as the existing one-site option. So it's, it looks like 10 off-sites, and I think the reality is, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Stacy, weren't there other two others that we looked at for a total? I thought there were two other off-site options for a total of seven. But, because the 10 viable, I think, was really looking at the existing downtown. So it might be a little misleading. I think these were the five that we looked at, correct? I'm deferring to you a little bit because we had gotten some of that information.
I think there were 10 total, but a couple of those were in town, right?
Yes, that's what it was, yes.
And didn't one or two not have sewer and water anywhere near?
I think you're right, Commissioner. I think there was one or two also. So that does, and I was curious about the same number, and I didn't seem to remember how we got into that 10.
Just a question on the off-site sites. We have some aerial views, but we have no address or no idea where those are at off-site. Do we look at, well, transportation timeframes and everything else and where they're at? I mean, I have no idea where these are at. I'm guessing I can grab one with the curb, but the rest of them, I have no idea where those are located. They'll all look like they're current agricultural sites outside the city limits.
We looked at properties that could have major access, so they were on major roadways. We did keep them a little blurred because we didn't, if the county should go this way, I think one of the first things to do is really sit down with potentially a few property owners and start to negotiate. So we didn't specifically define each address because we've seen sometimes where properties have been inflated when they think there's a increased interest in their property.
Well, that, and you also have the, the neighbors may object in those locations additionally as well. So pre-identifying is sometimes difficult, but it, as I say, to me, they all look pretty much agricultural and outside the city limits, so it does present transportation issues to get there in bad weather, plowing, resources for the sheriff's department and court services to get people out there to do their work, looks to me like, you know, got a little drifting today, we can't get out there. We've got to worry about that right now. They can continue to provide their services as necessary. So the off-site one, yeah, in an ideal situation, we'd build a new courthouse, jail, regional detention facility, and we'd have the police department, the highway patrol, and the sheriff's department, and we'd have everybody in one great big building. And we'd build it somewhere locally, but that's just not possible at this particular point in time or at this juncture. It was discussed at one time, having a joint facility with the city and the county, but now that ship has sailed. We're in that building right now, the ship and county's cooperation. So budget-wise, we're not going to be building one of those facilities. So the next case, best-case scenario is, do we build onsite or do we build it off-site? So is that our first decision, is onsite or off-site?
When we present on the 26th, yes, Commissioner, that would be.
All right. So those are the things we need to focus on in some respects. To the onsite position, you'd mentioned the boulevard. I don't know where that picture is right now. That the city has said they're not going to pay for, I believe, to the Traffic Safety Committee, as I understand the discussion. As I look at that bump out at that landscape curb extension, it does bring the Fourth Street in alignment with the rest of Fourth Street as it goes east and west. Obviously, as it goes west, it narrows down into the Children's Museum. That obviously, if we're going to do that, it should be our expense, in my opinion. I don't think we need to have a fight over who's paying for that. That should be part of our expense. I'd also like to look at that as an extension, where you have the driveways going in and out in the property line, extending it at least that much further, that direction of the boulevard, if not all the way to the corner. It does take out some parking from the 21-building site, takes out some parking from in front of the courthouse. And that area, I don't know how many spaces that is, but we do have the additional parking, as we've mentioned later, behind the church that's in, is the county's parking lot. So I think if you take and make that Green Boulevard extended as far as our budget will allow, but at the same time aesthetically, that really opens up some opportunities for some more landscaping and things to happen there. And in addition to that, it sort of hides the driveway going in. I know that everything takes place inside the building, which is great for security. But I, to me, if we're going to build in this location... But I, to me, if we're gonna build in this location, those types of things need to be done to help us aesthetically with the building, helps with the street flow of traffic, visibility, landscaping opportunities. Yeah, I don't know what those costs are, but in light of the money this is gonna take, it isn't, it's marginal. That's my comments about onsite.
Ms. Krogman?
Yeah, I guess if we're gonna consider offsite, I'm, I'm gonna wanna know where these properties are at, and who, what neighbors are there, and whose backyard we're gonna be building in, if we do it. And there's just a lot of, you know, the distance makes a big difference and that kinda stuff, too. So I don't know when we make these public or not, and maybe we make all five of them public and that kinda stuff, but, you know, I gotta, I gotta know where this is gonna If that's the first decision we have to make, is whether we stay here or there. I mean, that's an important one, where it's gonna be built, and how far it's away, and who's next door.
Yeah, and these were all within, Commissioner, they were all within a three-mile radius of what we looked at. So we did try to keep it fairly close.
You know, I think one misconception in this entire process was that if we built offsite, the current jail would go away. That's not going to happen. That is always going to be there because of the close proximity to the courthouse. So, you know, it will look as it does today. And we will do some, whatever we could get by with on the inside, so that we can still house prisoners as they come in, still have the sheriff's office there, and still run our 24/7 program out of there. So there, you know, and, and it may even be such a thing that we house women there, or we house juveniles there, or something like that. But that is always going to be there. It's always going to be next to the courthouse until such time as the courthouse is outgrown too. So I think that is something that the public needs to be made aware of, no matter what we do, especially if we build offsite, the current jail's going to be there as it is
I guess, looking at all this, we'll have an open house on the 11th. After that, we'll discuss this on the 26th. And I guess the question I'll bring up is, if we, is if we go back to the Board of Adjustment. If not, we move offsite. The question is, if we get approved by the Board of Adjustment with our adjusted plans we have here, if that's denied, again, we're gonna have to decide how to move forward from that. There's a lot of ifs, we're gonna, I mean, we got an open house, we're gonna have to discuss what we wanna do as commission, if we wanna go back to the Board of Adjustment, or if we wanna move offsite. If we go to the Board of Adjustment, if, if we're approved, we move forward, or we move offsite. That's big, there's a lot of ifs, so. I'd like to thank Bruce for the work you've done. I mean, the plans look a lot different than they did originally.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Bartlett?
And again, I'd like to thank you for providing the drawings and the perspectives of the landscaping that's already existing and how already will shade that area. You can't stand down there on Fourth Avenue, that it is, and you can't really see the building now. It's, it's pretty much covered with foliage. Obviously, that changes when the leaves go away, but at the same time, I really enjoy the new drawings. I think the perspective on the building looks, looks great. I don't think it's too tall, I call it a story and a half. It's, the courthouse is still the prominent fixture in the area. I'm concerned that already our delay is almost costing us a couple million dollars more, and I'm, I'm gonna anticipate that we may have some additional delays, and so it may, your estimates may be conservative, maybe they're not, but any delays that we have will, will increase the cost of us.
Commissioner, that's a good point that I should bring up. We, in the schedule, we're, we're trying to show the idea of a fast track, so getting the design, and we're doing this on another facility right now, getting the design finalized to where the structure and the basic systems can be defined, so that you can allow a contractor to get started before winter sets in and actually construct through winter. That's what we're starting to show there. If, if things got delayed and pushed out where we didn't fast-track, then it does push it out to the next year, which we're seeing anywhere from four to six percent per year inflation impacts. So there is the possibility that, again, we're showing that schedule, that first little red bar is actually the fast-track option, which is a very viable option, but that allows us to somewhat keep in line with what we're trying to achieve and move things forward without too much financial impact for delays.
The other thing I'd like to point out to Commissioner Jensen's remarks, I don't want it, I don't want this project to take hands on, on the Board of Adjustment, because that's just, that's too narrow an approval or disapproval process. It moves offsite if the Board of Adjustment doesn't approve, we will, we'll deal with that if it happens, but at the same time, we have some other issues with the historic preservation review. That can take longer, and it has on an awful lot of projects. That can delay us additionally if, if that happens outside of our hands. We can't, I believe, can't do any construction costs until that review is completed, so we can't turn a shovel over there. So that really can put us off a, a longer period of time than, than what we have anticipated here. So, again, I, I guess, you know, not, not that I wanna rush the project ahead, I think if we've done the work that we probably could've had six months ago would've helped. And, but now it's here, and we need to deal with it at this point in time. I don't wanna rely on the Board of Adjustment's approval. I think we can go a long way with that approval if, if we do some things with the landscaping and the boulevards at our expense, so that we understand that this is our project, this is our expense. So I think that I'd like this, move ahead, get the offsite reviewed. I agree with Commissioner Krogman, I'd like to know where they're at, and if that's privileged information because of contractual purchases, that's, that's understandable, and, and we should still be able to review those to help us with our decisions, so. Maybe we can get that in the next, before the, the open house, at least we have some idea where we're looking at there. Land acquisition costs, as you say, often go high when it's my land you want. I mean, we found that next door, so it happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. Hope to see some of you next Monday night.
Okay, moving on. Number 12, executive session, in accordance with South Dakota codified law, 1-25-2, Peninsula Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Carry.